Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, February 8, 2021, 6:00 PM. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary during the meeting. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. You will enter the meeting automatically muted. Closed captioning can be utilized by tapping the live transcription button on your Zoom This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Jordan.
Here.
City Manager Harlow Schalk.
Here.
Commissioner Halliday.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Olafman.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic which is our nation. Proclamation. Last week, the Helena branch of the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis observed their 100th anniversary. And we are reading that proclamation today. City of Helena proclamation. Whereas the Helena branch of the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis was established in Helena, Montana on February 1, 1921. And whereas Norma B. Holter, a Helena businessman and member of the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis Board of Directors, led the campaign for the branch's establishment in the city of Helena. And whereas the Helena branch of Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis and its local Board of Director worked to gather data about current economic conditions for Montana businesses and community leaders to inform Federal Reserve leadership in setting monetary policy. And whereas today, the Helena branch of the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis examined banks for safety and soundness, provides cash and corn to banks in the greater Montana region and educates the community about the economy and central banking through outreach programs. And whereas on February 1, 2021, the Helena branch of the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis would celebrate the 100th anniversary of the branch's establishment in Helena, Montana. And whereas the City of Helena commends the Helena branch of the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis for its commitment to serving the public by pursuing a growing economy and stable financial system. Therefore, I will, Mayor Wilma J. Collins hereby proclaim February 1, 2021, as Helena branch of the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis Day. The City of Helena extends best wishes for a successful 100th anniversary celebration in witness whereof. I here until set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana to be affixed this first day of February, 2021. Wilma Collins, Mayor, attest clerk of the Commission, Dana Clayborne. Consent agenda claims. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Mayor, I recommend you entertain a motion to approve the claims for January 22nd, 26th, and 29th, 2021 for a total of $3,326,792.74.
Do we have any discussions on that? Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Are we including item B in there, too?
No, just the claims for now. We'll just move forward to.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and move item A, claims.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Olafman.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Madam Manager, would you continue?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, Commission. And Mayor, I recommend you entertain a motion to enter into an interlocal agreement between the City of Missoula, Missoula County, City of Bozeman, and the City of Helena in regards our tariff, excuse me, our green tariff. Thank you, Mayor.
Any comments, questions, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just had a quick comment and I'm happy to make a motion.
Go ahead. What's your comment, Commissioner Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to Patrick Judge for all of his work on, on this and really making sure that Helena was in this collaborative process with Bozeman and Missoula as I think all three communities moved towards our energy goals. And I mentioned this last time, but you know, it's, it's great to see this progress. It wasn't just a year ago. This is just an idea at Big Sky when the three communities got together to discuss it. I'm really appreciative of his work and I think it's just an important step and one in the right direction as we move towards, you know, a path that aligns our words with our actions and excited to see this move today.
Mayor, I have one quick question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Olafman.
Thank you, Mayor. So maybe to the City Manager, Mr. Judge. So it looks like we are putting up some money for a consultant. I was just curious, it articulates how much each of the four cities are putting into that. My understanding is that this is work happening with the utility company as well. Are they also providing some resources for consultants or is that just the cities that is covering the cost of that?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner Olafman. Patrick Judge is on the line and I can turn it over to him. My understanding, it is the amount that each of the communities are contributing. Patrick, though, Mayor, if you're in, would it allow for him to provide additional comment?
Mr. Judge, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Commissioner Olafman. Yes, this, those amounts do reflect just the, the community's contributions towards hiring this consultant. The utility is not involved in hiring the consultant. This will be the consultant specifically for the communities, but the plan is to work collaboratively with the utility in proposing the green tariff to the Public Service Commission. But it was felt that it was important for the communities to have our own counsel to make sure that our interests are being well represented.
Great, that's helpful. And then maybe one follow-up question to Mr. Judge. So it does note here that there could potentially be amounts allocated in the following fiscal year. Do you anticipate that this contract of 138,000, which is, it looks like primarily provided by the City of Bozeman would be the cost of the, of the, the contract? Or do we anticipate that there would be additional funding reflected in the next fiscal year?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Olafman, and again, Patrick Judge, Sustainability Coordinator. Yeah, so it's, it's kind of odd how all that came, came to be. It's a very unequal cost allocation. Bozeman really kind of took the lead, starting down this, this particular path and received their funding authority first, and then the different communities were pursuing this and then kind of came together to do this jointly. But so then that first round, we had, had these different allocations authorized, but that is just for fiscal year 2021. And so that portion of the contract is anticipated to cost $100,000. And, and you're right that Bozeman's carrying the majority share of that, but it is expected to continue forward into fiscal year 2022. There's going to be additional work needed to actually advance the proposal in front of the commission. And the hope is that the communities will provide additional funding. So the second part of that contract was the, I think 30,000 is what Energy Strategies had proposed, which does not include legal fees either. But so the desire is, I think, to, to keep Bozeman's initial contribution in this fiscal year, that that's all that they will be contributing and that the other communities will try to even that up, not entirely, but more. So yes, I will be respectfully requesting a budget line item for additional work in this area for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Judge. Do you have any other comments before we take a motion? Okay, Commissioner Dean.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve an interlocal agreement with the city, between the City of Missoula, Missoula County, City of Bozeman, and the City of Helena.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Olafman.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, commu- communications proposals from the Commission. Do we have anything from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I just had one quick question for Mr. Knopki and a comment to start out with. First, just want to say thanks to your team for the quick work in getting the streets cleared. I've had a couple people reach out and walking by as I've been shoveling and saying, good job. So appreciate that. The other question I had too, and it was in reference to a comment I got, and then we also got an email today, was about the berms that result in driveways and, and on the corners and the rest. And I'm, I know that before you talked about getting some of the graders on some of the main streets, but I'm wondering if maybe you could give an update on that and any words we can pass along to help avoid this or help folks out.
Mayor, Commissioners, our graders will be out tomorrow morning and tomorrow afternoon. We have them set to start on our snow routes and where possible, clear those burnt, you know, curb the snow back and keep the snow berms out of the driveways and in front of the mailboxes. We've also scheduled snow removal starting Sunday night. Our snow removal team will be working Sunday night, Monday night, and Tuesday night to be clearing the downtown, the areas around, down in the Sixth Ward area by the Larson Block, and then be looking at areas around the Capitol and the hospital to remove snow.
Thank you.
I guess one quick mention is with snow amounts like this, the easiest way, I know people don't like the berms, but one easy way to minimize the berms is to pile your snow on the downstream side of your driveway. If you pile it on the upstream side, the plow hits it, it knocks it back into a cleared area. If you pile it on the downstream side and we have boulevards or other snow storage there, that snow will get piled up there instead of back into the driveways.
Thank you. And Mr. Director Knopki, I just want to thank you for the ride along. And it was an eye-opener again, because you know, and when I hear about the berm going up and it's snow blocking the driveway, I saw that, but unless we have trucks following the snow plow, it's going to take time to be able to remove the snow, the berm from the driveway. Because you have one snow plow going through, you have to wait until that truck goes around to remove the berm. It takes time. So I apologize to the community, but unless we have as many trucks going behind as many snow plow, it won't be done automatically. It will be done, but it will take time. Do you have any other comments or questions from the Commission, discussion? All right. City Attorneys, report.
Mayor, Commissioners, just one brief item tonight. I wanted to let you know that the city did get a discrimination complaint filed with the Human Rights Bureau recently. The city promptly investigated the matter and I'm actually happy to report that the complaint has already withdrawn the complaint. So that one has actually started and concluded in a very short timeframe. And there, just to circle back, there is still one HRB complaint still pending from a former employee recall alleging discrimination on the, on the basis of alleged protected activity. The investigation has concluded and we expect a decision from the Human Rights Bureau by the first weekend March on that one. And that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Manag-, City Managers, report.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I just have three quick items tonight. First, I wanted to let you know that during the January 6th Commission Admin Meeting, Administrative Meeting, Commissioner Halliday had requested follow-up from a presentation provided around homelessness and COVID, and in particular, how Helena can support those in need and in particular, where there may be gaps. At this time, our team has been working with Good Samaritan and at the same time have been trying to address an issue on a shop code property. On January 25th, 2021, I met with the Good Samaritan team who had identified the specific gaps after having discovered and studying the issues and the circle of repeated homelessness within individuals. During the March 3 Commission Meeting, I will invite Ms. Ortega from the Good Samaritan's team to discuss their ideas and how the city might be able to help them. I wanted to also note some recognition that has taken place. Last week, both Chiefs Wood and Hagan were recognized by the Chair of the Chamber of Commerce for their work over the last year in light of the pandemic, along with healthcare workers and other county community partners. This week, the Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Working Group will be recognizing Helena Police Officer Dakota Becker, along with Lewiston Clark County Deputy Matt Coltkin as Officers of the Year. And from the Helena Police, excuse me, the Helena Fire Department, Brad Patterson has been selected as the Montana American Legion Firefighter of the Year. Congratulations to all of you in your recognition. Also want to thank our transportation team for their work and efforts over the last 24 hours and weekend. I want to reassure you that if there is an industrious entrepreneur out there who can help solve the Birmingham issue, there are communities across the country who would be in support of whatever your solution is. We continue to research new ideas and I appreciate the efforts of Director Knopki and our team to identify solutions. I also would want, want to remind the community that oftentimes those who have limitations, those who have wheelchairs or are using other assists along our sidewalks need access. So please, when clearing your sidewalks, keep them in mind. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Regular items. Director Lila.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. We're going to have an expansion or consider enlargement of a water and wastewater service area for a lot located on the end of Raleigh Street and Iowa Street. It's up in the Crestview subdivision. That's how we got the South Hills. I'll try and share my screen. This is where the property is located. This is where Beatty Street Trailhead is located now. This is Malvum Reservoir. And then, so this is Raleigh Street and Iowa Street. This property in here is several lots and blocks and then make up the property description. So it's kind of difficult to just say where it is, and it's a very long legal description. But this is the property that the homeowner is looking at moving in, and it's Dale and, sorry, Dale and Don Newell, they actually own this house here and are looking at moving down or just off the hill. And with that, we would ask that there would be conditions to extend the water across the frontage of the property as required by city code, possibly loop this depending on what the fire flows are. The difficulty is, as you can see right here, there is a very large drainage that would have to be filled in or to go down and up makes it difficult just to make it connect. And then the other one is to extend the sewer as far across the frontage of the property as possible. It is again, because this is much lower right here, and so with topography, can extend it all the way across the frontage of the property. We'd come out of the ground. So with that, consider the enlargement of the water and sewer service area, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Comments or questions from the Commission? Do we have any public comments? Okay, if nothing else, then we'll take a, I'll entertain a motion. Yes, go ahead. Commissioner Logan.
I'd move to conditionally approve the application for enlargement of the wastewater service area for a lot located south of the South Raleigh and Iowa intersection, insisting of multiple lots in blocks 8, 11, and 12, the courthouse addition. Exhibit A for, see Exhibit A for legal description. The condition of approval includes extension of the water main across the frontage along Iowa Street and the extension of the sewer main up south Raleigh and across the property frontage as far as feasible, minimum of 225 to 275, 275 feet.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, just a question for Mr. Leland. Do we know who owns the lot that, well, sort of the island lot that will be in the middle of all of these lots now?
All right. Mayor, Commissioner, are you talking these lots right here?
No, to the east of it, so south of Mr. Newell and Mrs. Newell's properties. And yep, that's the one.
Um, I do not off the top of my head, give me a second, and I can tell you who that, who it is. If there's any other questions, I can do that while I'm pulling it up real quick.
Yeah, I do have another one. Have we ever with these extensions or with these conditional approvals required anything in the way of, say, continued access? I mean, it's their property, but you can see that there is quite a few social trails that move across this property and access the South Hills Trails Network. We can see where either easements or other agreements have been reached, some of those lots down there, like 896. But here, it's a, it's a significant cutoff and I see people use that. I was just curious if you know, if the city attorney knows whether we, whether we've ever asked a property owner to maintain something like that in one of these agreements.
Mayor, Commissioner, and Thomas, you can step in if you want. This road right here is actually in an easement. We have the plat, so it's going to continue to be in that easement. And what I've been told from previous attorneys is we haven't asked to keep any of the, of the trails in conjunction with extending the water and sewer service area. We've asked them outside of that on a different mechanisms and parks is usually involved, but we have never tied it to a water and sewer service boundary. We may be able to take a look, but I was told that that is nothing we can really consider with the water and sewer service boundary.
Fair enough. Do we see any of those other mechanics coming down the road here with regard to this specific property? I mean, I would assume it was like subdivision or something along those lines. If this property remains whole, building permits or anything else that would trigger that opportunity to have those discussions?
Uh, Mayor, Commission, without just going and asking them and then they already have an easement that goes through it, without barring a subdivision, I don't see us having any real mechanism besides just going and talking to them to see if they're willing to donate or sell us an easement at this time.
And with regard to the road easement that's on there, is that one that we're still then considering not just, say, an easement for utilities or when that's an easement for the public use?
Um, I will pull it up. I don't believe it is for public use. I believe it is for a house that is up above. And Commissioner, just to answer your question, this is Newell's property, Mr. and Mrs. Newell too, so they own this property here and looking at purchasing this one, I believe. I don't believe it's gone through. If we look at this easement, it is, it's cut off of here, but I, I don't know for sure if that is a public easement to be able to be used or not.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments or questions for Director Lila? It was moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Olafman.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider an ordinance amending the citizen regulations concerning Consider an ordinance amending the citizen regulations concerning parking of vehicles, trailers, recreational vehicles, and boats on city streets during winter by amending Title VII Public Ways and Properties, Chapter Eight, Snow and Ice of the Helena City Code. Director Kanaki?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Currently, city code does not reflect some of the changes that were made when the Heritage Center along Sixth Avenue there that right away was vacated. So some of these, one of the revisions is along that line. The other one is there's some minor wording revisions. And the other one is to permit construction trailers along routes or other city streets during the winter time to facilitate approved building, city building permits. Our proposal tonight is to revise that ordinance accordingly to describe the snow route along Sixth and allow the city manager to permit certain trailers along the roadways between November 1st and April 15th and other mining, minor wording revisions. And then in addition, due to some recent inquiries that have been filtering in over the past couple of years, but even more so this past fall. We are, they're asking for additional exceptions. So staff is considering an amendment to broaden the permit authority purpose for authorities. A staff amendment would allow the city manager or designate to evaluate requests on a case by case basis for extraordinary circumstances. These may include moving trucks or short-term parking circumstances. The public hearing for this will be noticed on February 13th and 19th. It will be in front of you on February 22nd. Disadvantages, just the city code would not reflect the current situation and our recommended motion tonight is to approve first passage of the ordinance amending the city's regulations concerning the parking of vehicles, trailers, recreational vehicles, and boats on city streets during the winter by amending Title VII Public Ways and Property, Chapter Eight, Snow and Ice of the Helena City Code. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Comments or questions for Director Lila?
Um, Mr. Kanaki.
I mean, Director Kanaki, I apologize.
Um, with regard to the, it's on page four of the ordinance, emergency snow routes, east-west streets. It, I see the cleanup language to reflect the removal of the street where the Heritage Center is going to go. Previously was, it went to Lamborn. Now we're stopping at Roberts. Was there an additional consideration to not go past then to start at Sanders and go to Lamborn? Do we just think that street doesn't need it? Is it accounted for someplace else?
Mayor Commissioners, that street will be plowed as, pretty much as usual. The reason that it wasn't included as the snow route was we tried to make those snow routes continuous where we wouldn't have breakups where the plow drivers could continually go to another major street, turn around and come back. So it is not identified as emergency snow route, but there are other priorities and emergency snow routes in the areas that that section of road will get addressed prior to like moving into like local resident roadways.
That makes sense from logistical standpoint. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions for Director Kanaki? Any public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve first passage of an ordinance amending the city's regulations concerning the parking of vehicles, trailers, recreational vehicles, and boats on city streets during winter by amending Title VII Public Ways and Property, Chapter Eight, Snow and Ice of the Helena City Code.
Second.
Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Communications from Helena Citizens Council? Madam Clerk, do we have any representative on?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I, I do not have a hand raised from the, never mind, I take that back just a moment. Go ahead, Mr. Andrew.
Mayor Collins, Commissioners, I'll do a brief update on the Helena Citizens Council from January 27. We did have our elections of officers and we've retained the same team, which will be Dylan Clapmire as our Chair, Sumner Sharp as our co-chair, Nancy Perry as our treasurer, and the secretary will be Mike Bishop. At our last meeting, we did have a couple of guest speakers. Andrea Opitz, the executive director of the Helena Tourism Alliance spoke to us and outlined HTA's mission to promote and preserve Helena as a destination location and also to increase the occupancy of lodging in Helena. Uh, our second guest speaker was Paul Pacini, who talked about public transportation in Helena. And he kind of discussed the dependable bus and bus route, what it would look like in Helena. And he had several suggestions and has reached out to Helena Citizens Council to pursue these. So you might see something down the way on transit in Helena in the form of recommendation or advisement. Our budget committee, of course, is ramping up. Sumner Sharp is leading that and he states in his priorities document that the strategic plan will be to improve neighborhood livability, promote healthy and sustainable growth in Helena, and promote a safe community. And lastly, we discussed the Citizen Conservation Board recommendation of waste reduction resolution, which Helena Citizens Council voted on to support their waste reduction resolution and hopes that the city of Helena will incorporate it into its city plan. So thank you for your time. I appreciate you squeezing me in here.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. And it wasn't a hard ass. We didn't squeeze you in. We got lots of time today. So thanks for that update.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner.
Since we have so much time.
I didn't, I didn't mean for you.
I'm just wondering if Mr. Andrew, do you know if the meeting was recorded or if Mr. Pacini's presentation is available anywhere?
Uh, I'm going to write an advisement and bring it to our executive committee and that'll be brought to the Helena Citizens Council to discuss, vote on and amend and then we'll send it to the city commission hopefully.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any final comments from the commission or discussion? Is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? This time, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.